Call the meeting to order. Mr. Placko, can you take roll?
Lori Misty.
Here.
Linda Gracie.
Here.
Scott Fischel.
Here.
Tom Heck.
Here.
Jennifer Hart.
You stand for the pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance in the name of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On behalf of the board, I'd like to welcome all students, staff, parents, and interested community members to tonight's Board of Education meeting. I'd like to remind everyone that this is a meeting of the Board of Education held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is time for public comment during the meeting in the public participation section on the agenda. That brings us to special reports.
Sorry.
Oh, real quick, I'm sorry. We do have an addition of a resolution here. I think everybody has a copy of it that's at the table. There's a resolution to amend the personnel consent agenda, item B, to add the appointment of Timothy Carroll, transportation operator, one-year limited contract at an hourly rate of $20.57, step zero, effective September 1st, 2023. Make a motion to add that to the agenda. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Yeah.
We're adding that under item.
We're adding that.
Right.
It's not a separate agenda.
No, so we add it right there. Yep. It's just a motion to change the agenda.
Okay, right, to add to the PMD.
Yep. All right, any other discussion? Can you hold a roll?
Lori Misty.
Aye.
Linda Gracie.
Aye.
Scott Fischel.
Aye.
Tom Heck.
Aye.
Jennifer Hart.
Motion carried.
I cross it out now, I usually cross it out.
All right, thank you for reminding me, Mr. Placko. All right, then that brings us to special reports.
Okay, two, first of all, today was the first day of school.
You hitting the down button?
I hit the down button, the up button. It's on.
Did it find a break?
I don't know, it's making a.
We just heard about how techie you are.
I know, right?
Right, sorry.
The little things.
I ruined it for you.
So. So our intent was to play the video that Mr. Fairbairn put together with all the pictures of all of our parents. And then how we had over 450 back to school photographs. And the video is over 35 minutes long. So instead of doing that, we decided to put some highlights up and let you know that the video montage is located on our social media page. So here are some of the ones that our family sent us early. The last slide here is a picture of our staff that is not in the video montage, a one I kind of figured that kind of point out. So some of just the buildings with the student driving. In the upper right-hand corner is my family's first day at school picture. Thought I'd throw that in there because we never got to before, so that's kind of a fun one. As well as just some of the things that we saw at the schools when we were visiting today would be remiss if I did not thank our transportation staff. Mr. Andre and his team were amazing. They were 10 drivers short and still ran all the routes, made it happen to the point where we were watching buses with kids coming out that were absolutely full, and they continued to go back and pick up another half of a route and come back and do some great things. So really appreciative of that team's work and all that they do. To make sure we can still transport students to and from school. We know we're a little late, we know it was a late, especially with the first day, but they came in relatively smoothly. In fact, I was at Riverview in the last bus meeting about 15 minutes after a show, which was really impressive this morning. Getting home, I know is another issue, kind of dropping kids off from where they live and going through the routes. But we did do really successful first day on, made it into all the classroom, or most of the classrooms, I think I might have missed one or two. Kids were really happy to be here, teachers were happy to be here, kind of working with them and all our staff. So it was a great day.
So he survived his first day?
He did, he did. I did text that he's doing great, so let's say, "Go home and we'll see you tomorrow." He did drive, his was the one bus that broke down this morning.
Oh, no.
Stuff broke all, the rest of the work, but his, his did, so. And then the next one, I was just like, I'd like to go over the Bieloski facility effects just to see, kind of look at what we have and give the kind of concepts and ideas as to what happens and what they presented us. So this is the second draft of the report that they presented. They did make some changes, and one of the changes is these larger sheets here that are kind of the prices. And we asked them in the second draft to put in some kind of, if we do the route, what else can we do at the time we're here? Some kind of some project ideas together to kind of pump them into potential projects that are there. And also they've used them into different categories of needs of replacement. So the red is critical. The second one, I guess it's kind of a darker one, is potentially critical. The third category is deteriorating. The fourth being functional improvements, improvement aesthetics. And then the fifth is grandfather code standards conditions. So kind of looking at where they are. One thing to note is that this kind of fixes the systems, it doesn't necessarily upgrade. So one of the things that we noted, that I noted, we talked about, air conditioning is not a part of this. So it's just fixing the heat. It's not actually changing HTRAD to include air conditioning in the building as well. It does not account for additional learning spaces. So if we were to keep Buckeye the same way, we still have the two, soon to be three modular units out there to kind of pick some of those things that are there as well. So our thought was to kind of open it up for discussion, get your feedback as to what else you'd like to see from the report. And then go back to Bieloski and say, "This is going forward for all the buildings. These are the reports we would like," and the final kind of whole project scope of priorities.
So when they redo the, when they do the entire district, they may reorder this stuff because now they'll have five schools.
They're gonna have six reports.
Well, right.
Yeah, because John R. and Riverside will be separate.
So while they say this, if we were just gonna do Buckeye individually, and that's how they're gonna approach every building?
So every building comes out as individual, but if you'll notice, not everything can be critical.
But then when they do, but when they do the overall report, some things are going to get rearranged because they're gonna look at the district as a total, correct?
Yeah, we talked about that with Bieloski as far as, once we have all four assessments, how do we coordinate among the buildings? Because obviously, what, you know, in the building should have drawn what we can do and all those other things. So, you know, if you did Buckeye first, it was logical to do that one first that we can get to a report that sends back to all parties so they can duplicate that in for the facilities. And just making sure that, we don't want to get to a point where we go all four and go, "Well, what about this, and what about that, why don't we do this?" We're trying to get those kinks out now and make sure that we're all kind of satisfied.
So at the end of it all, I just want to pose a question to the board administration. Like, at the end, when we have all of these individualized reports, they're gonna be helpful and useful, but we're gonna want to be looking at, okay, now overall, what is the assessment, right?
Absolutely. So I, you know, in my vision or thought that I had is that when we're done, we're probably gonna want to figure out the overall scope across the district of the buildings in question so that we have a prioritized list and we can have, you know, how much money we have available, those priorities, and then schedules and, you know, contracts and what have you that would allow us to proceed with fixing those things in the prioritized order that we ultimately would come to.
So I noticed there's some things on here, though, and I'm gonna say this, and Mr. Alessic might look at me like you're crazy, but there's things like painting a ceiling, are you fixing or repairing a ceiling? I'm assuming, you know, and I know that they lumped that now into a project, but that to me seems like maybe some low hanging fruit. I don't know, because I'm not sure what goes into that ceiling or why it needs fixed.
The reason for that is it's a metal roof.
Okay.
It's, I'm sorry, it's a metal ceiling. So we've already done some painting and priming of it last year, but it is, it just continues to deteriorate.
So there's more to it than just patching and painting?
It's not as simple as the acoustical ceilings we have here.
Okay.
It's that interlocking metal rooftops.
So I was looking, is there any low hanging fruit, right? So I know some of it's not all been packaged, but is there anything? Again, I'm gonna use painting as an example. Painting seems like, obviously there's more to it, but is there any of that low hanging fruit that we can make some progress on?
And I did notice that, like, as far as the end of replacing exterior doors, well, they referenced the Vescul project, but I think we might have to communicate well that those other doors are hard to be replaced as part of that project. So they might have realized, man, there might be a couple of things in there that were already addressing. But yeah, I mean, there are a couple of things I saw there, like, well, that seemed like a pretty simple thing we could do, maybe just knock out our own separate from.
And I don't know how much of that there is. I guess I'd ask the facilities committee to kind of take a look and say, is there anything that might not need to be packaged, like, into a smaller pro, a smaller project?
Yeah, there could potentially be some, some quick wins, but I wouldn't want, to be honest with you, I wouldn't want to move down the path of really getting, thinking projects just for Buckeye. I think we need to do that in conjunction with all the other reports as well. So I think that is, that is something that we can, we can start pursuing.
I mean, it was really truly painted ceiling, I'm thinking that's different than, but it sounds like a lot more to it. That's a bad example.
Well, I think we need to, we'll have to investigate and see some of, you know, are there some things that can be done by the current maintenance staff? I.e., so we wouldn't have to lit a contract? I mean, those would be quick wins, so to speak.
But your preference, what I'm hearing is, Paul, still keep it all, a big picture, once we get everything.
I wouldn't want to spend any major dollars at this point until we had an idea of what the other buildings need as well.
Okay.
And then frankly, we are gonna, the board is gonna have to have a conversation about, you know, what are the priorities? Because if, again, I think that the two structures that are gonna be the most enduring are the campus and the moof, then we, it gets into the question of what potential long-term vision do we have for other, other thoughts for the long-term view of our buildings?
I think, I think it goes along with, yeah, what are the long-term views of our buildings as far as considering all this, do we want to keep them? Do we want, what is our plans for space? What other kinds of concerns do we have? Because they're not addressing, they address some things with the trailers, but not everything. And they're not addressing space needs. So if we feel like we have space needs, what are we gonna do about that? We're gonna have to decide all that at the same time that we're looking at all of this other information, so.
I would agree. I think the other thing, too, to think about, again, this address is taking the buildings into functioning shape in the same configuration that they are and doesn't necessarily even consider how we teach today as opposed to how we teach when they were built. And are they kind of fitting for that, that all the flexible spaces? Doesn't have priorities for that, where if we do take a look at this comprehensive plan and look at it and tie it clip, yes, we know that the facilities plan is part of the strategic plan, but also preparing all of our students for graduation, for the life beyond graduation, how do our buildings fit that? If we put it into one of those other spaces that fit their, does that, does that meet our needs as well? And where that ties in along the way, how that ties into a comprehensive facilities project? Where, and the other thing is, what is the, we talk about what's the, you know, Dr. Locker at our opening day, we forget to talk about kind of what's the baseline, what's the standard for education in every classroom? What are the mental expectations, you know, the Riverside way, kind of a framework for what a class looks like? Think that same thing out of the facilities test. And what's our, what's our mental standards for a classroom and student experience? It's like K through five, what do they look like, kind of the middle level, like the high school level? What do those, what do those standards look like? Because they, right now, they look vastly different in the different buildings. I think, can we, what are the mental, do we say, every student's gonna have access to this? They're gonna see this, they're gonna kind of have an experience with this, and what does that look like kind of moving forward? I think that's something to consider, too, if we put this facilities plan together.
So I definitely, I mean, I generally agree with what, everything that's been said. I think that, with the financial resources we currently have available, it is gonna be focused on bringing the material condition of these four buildings, if you include John R. separately, I guess five buildings separately, and then trying to figure out how to apply that money. I don't think, my personal opinion is, taking the available resources we have today is, is not, increasing the footprint of the buildings is not what that money's for from my perspective. It is trying to get the material condition of the buildings that are going to be enduring up to a higher material condition so that they are enduring. And then when we come to a conclusion with, you know, with the board or future board, then, then there probably needs to be a conversation, there will have to be, definitively have to be a conversation with the community to figure out what's, what's viable, because it's gonna take more money, is the bottom line. And so that would be my, my sense is that, that the money we have available today is to focus on bringing the material condition up. I've already said it, anyway, I won't say it again. But that would be my, my perspective.
I guess the only thing that I'm concerned about, outside of material condition, is just space. That's, that's still one of my big concerns, because we just know we're growing and it's tight, and I don't know how to, I think we have to think of it on that long-term, how do we solve that?
And I, and I agree, but that's, we don't.
Not with this money, I, yes.
Not with this money, and I definitely agree. And then the one thing, so, Dr. Retino, you were kind enough to send out the current footprint of our student population. We're about 4,300 students this year, which is terrific. But, you know, we have 75 more students approximately at Riverview than we do over at Parkside. You know, are there ways that we can reappropriate the student population such that we're taking some of the pressure off? Granted, it's a short-term thing, but, but, you know, 75 students, you know, hypothetically, if you could move 75 students from Buckeye and put them into the Parkside environment, that would, that would go a lot way towards meeting our immediate needs. I know that's not possible, but, but, but adding that into. Yeah, but putting something like that into the mix over the next couple of years might be a way of alleviating some of the problems we have today with footprint or with space needs. And we are going to, and I, in the course of this discussion, if I could bring to present day, I would like to understand the status of the two new classrooms, the two new modular, two new used modular classrooms for Buckeye, just so the, you know, the public can understand when those will be in place and when we can expect a little bit of relief for Buckeye, even if it's not exactly what we want.
We just talked about it today, and I think we were waiting a phone call back from modular, they're submitting permits. I don't know, Richie, did you?
They're finishing, they're finishing up the scope of work in the prints to the design of where it's gonna be placed to submit them for prints. They're also doing drawings for the electrical that has to have a permit as well as the fire safety security. We are still, we are still on target for mid, mid to late November for those to arrive and be connected.
Is it fair to take away from what you said that until those drawings are approved, that nothing can be done to the structures? Because we don't know what, what Paintsville Township is going to actually give the thumbs up on?
No, they're really, speaking with the building department there personally, because we are a school, we have more leeway with what we do with our buildings and our grounds. So they really don't, there's really not gonna be any sort of monumental hurdle that's going to delay us at this time.
It's definitely possible, so.
Correct. And while they are waiting for permits and gathering that information, they are, the modules are in the process of being renovated as we.
Okay, so work is going on?
Work is going on.
Okay. All right, so mid, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So for purposes of tonight, though, our goal is to look at this data, right? And assess whether or not it's kind of what we want to see going forward or whatever, so that then when they're done.
Not necessarily the, what the projects are, we're improving it, it's more of. Is this the format that more information will lead to make?
Because when we looked at it the last time, there was no, there was no number data in here. We didn't have this for sure at all. This, this was kind of in there, but it was just highlighted with no cost data, and now we have.
It was a list of just the projects and then highlighted, but not necessarily costs, and not broken out by different, what they would see as comprehensive projects.
Right, right, this is branded.
Yes.
This package of information.
And they had, you know, we noticed the far right, they had a timeline of what they suggested, different projects to be done.
Where is that?
Immediate, and others say like, two to two years, three to five or something. You know, two to five, five to 10, they could have that.
Okay, I got it, it's.
They kind of prioritize it.
Maybe, okay, I understand.
What they felt was, I wish you prioritize. I might disagree with some of that, but at least it's a, you know, it's one of those things, it's an independent evaluation, so we didn't want to, we didn't want to sway them and say, "We should do this first or that first." You tell us what you think, and then analyze it.
So then let me ask you something, right? So this, this is really helpful, I love it, right? But are they going to realign these once they're done with all the buildings and reprioritize? Okay, this is just a building, this is just a snapshot of a building? We were just gonna spend our money and do one building, this would be immediate, right? But then are they going to realign in their thinking, once they have all the buildings done, and give us a different report?
Like a district.
Do you know what I mean, like a district-wide? Okay, these are immediate, and maybe this one didn't make that list.
Right, so I, I kind of think that's our job. That we, we're the ultimately, you know, in collaboration with everybody, that ultimately it's the board that's gonna have to approve the expenditures, and we're gonna have to figure out across all the buildings, here's all the information. We have all these great, you know, great reports from Bieloski, but we're gonna have to set the priorities overall for what goes on in the district, obviously, with, in collaboration. But I don't know that, Bieloski can't provide that insight for us on which, overall, are the projects that we should.
Well, I guess, I guess in some ways, I'm thinking, I don't know, if they look at five different buildings, six different buildings, whatever, you know, and they, all these are immediate, and if I say, "Well, I only have so much money," then I would do this one, right? Like.
We could certainly ask for a reply, we can ask for a reply.
Some, some sort of recommendation, right?
It's a conversation we work session once this is all completed.
Yeah.
And that's probably the forum to kind of ask those type of questions of the, is, you know, the, the costs that exceed what we have available, so that we can figure out the prioritizing.
Right, which one is the most immediate, right?
Right.
If I have 10, 10 or 12 things that they say are immediate, but I count my five, which ones are those gonna be, like, in their opinion? I get that we don't have to agree with that, but that's kind of what we're paying them for.
I agree, actually, that deals with the comprehensive facilities plan.
Right.
And I think the buildings that we know are gonna stay online, those are medias, might be more immediate than a building that we could see potentially replacing if we were right with the community.
So, and why do we expect the rest of their stuff?
It's, well.
I know.
What have you done for me recently? What have you been, I think.
This is not the day of.
Originally, it should be September 30th, but I would expect October 31st based on this timing, but I don't know. We haven't had an discussion yet as far as, it seemed like, because they're using a third-party cost estimator, so it's, they might have a report for us, but not necessarily the cost figures or whatever.
Well, in our timely, was only a guess on how long we thought it would take anyways, so I'd rather have, I'd rather have thorough.
It's already come out, and you've already done the fieldwork and assessed the conditions and taken pictures, and so, fully reported. They're working on writing the reports now, it was the cost figures that was the delay.
Well, and they did mention that this building specifically was a lot larger and a lot more than what they had initially thought. Okay, Mr. Alessic even said they were really tired, that's for sure.
So, you know, getting back to the point that Mrs. Kraus brought up in why we're here, so I, my personal opinion is, I don't see any gaps with what they've done. I think the report is very thorough, the, you know, when they were able to integrate in the, the cost estimates. I mean, I think this is, you know, if we had the information for all of the buildings in question, we could start the process of actually prioritizing. So I think that, that we've reached the standard, in my opinion, in a way, of, we've reached the threshold of thoroughness that would allow us to do an effective job in moving forward.
Okay, I would, I would agree. I think I'm super happy with it.
Mr. Fischel?
Well, I think once we have all the information, we can sit down and put it all together, reprioritize, and put everyone's knowledge and information on the table and then see the best path forward. Till we have that, this is great for one building, but we're gonna need them all.
But it works like this for all the buildings, kind of meet the scope of what you were thinking?
Well, I would defer to Mr. Heck.
Yeah, I, yeah, the answer is yes, for my perspective.
Does it work for you guys?
Yeah, I wanted to take another, I read the first report, and I just looked at the summary, the quick summary of changes, and we threw it again, and I see anything else, because it came to us yesterday, so it wasn't a quick, it wasn't a lot of time for us to digest it for tonight's meeting. And so if there's things that come up, or if you guys notice anything, if you review again, or like, if I do, 2:00 in the morning, and all of a sudden you wake up and go, "Oh, what about this?" And then send myself an email, remind myself, you know, if something comes up that you think of, okay, well, I'll look at Bieloski, and go, "Hey, we do this."
Send an email.
I send emails myself all the time.
Send an email.
So, Mr. Alessic, I mean, we've had discussions in buildings and grounds on the, in the first iteration of this, and at that point, you seem pretty satisfied with the trajectory that we're on. Has, anything else that you would, any other observations that you would add?
No, I think they're doing what we've asked them to do. I think they've been thorough. They, they seem to be communicating well with each other when they're on the sites of the parent schools, and I think it's, it will be very helpful information for us to sit down and digest and make a path going forward.
And Tom, if I could just add, I know you asked about the modular unit. We've been focused on second semester. So anything prior to that, which, again, November, late November is basically a second semester, so we'll make that transition with the classes that will be in there, probably the second semester.
And then, sir, I, for some reason, I had it in my head, I knew it ended in a, you know, TER or EER or something, or BER, but I, I thought it was a camera, not November.
Right now, I'm waiting, probably by the second semester, we need a transition.
Okay, so I did, for after the meeting, I did, I constituted a call and had some concerns about a classroom in Buckeye, and so we can maybe talk about that afterwards. Because I did think it was, I thought maybe relief was coming their way sooner than it is, so.
That's all I have.
All right. I did not send out an email, so I apologize to the board about old business. Is there any old business to bring to the table? All right, any new business?
Little business over here.
Tomorrow, in the primary package, you will get the first link to the Language Arts Course of Studies from the seventh, kindergarten through seventh grade tomorrow. So we're gonna do those in chunks, because they're a little lengthier, okay?
And that's popped in me, because I keep forgetting, but old business, why, why?
I know, sorry. I feel like I'm supposed to make an email, but that's where it finished.
No, 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 that's fine. I, one, last, last week, we approved the curriculum for math, and, and we did that with really not too much comment. I just, I didn't want to acknowledge the work that went into it, and I think that, that the way it is designed, if you're a parent or a teacher or a community member or what have you, if you want to see what's going on and what the particular classes are going to be covering, you can now do that. You can see the state requirements, and I think on the left, and you can go across and see some of the materials and resources that the, will be utilized by the teachers in the classroom. And that just, it makes it more understandable and comprehensible for, for everybody in the community to understand what's going on, but particularly helpful, I think, for the, for the parents. So I did want to acknowledge the hard work, and maybe we did that anyway kind of last week, but I don't think I said anything, so I wanted to make the, set the record straight and say thank you.
And it's interactive, too. You can click on links and actually get links to data that they can come look at as well. So it's not just a.
Has it been posted already? I didn't want to.
No, the math ones have not been posted, so that'll.
I get it.
Will be, and then like I said, you guys can start with the language arts, couple of weeks, another week or so, and I'll give you the link to the, to the high school.
We need the links to the standards, which is really, really nice as well. That's, it's just really.
It just, it just adds a whole bunch of clarity and transparency to what's going on. on, and that's all helpful.
Any other old business?
Not for me.
Good. All right, so new business, any new business tonight? All right, so that brings us to the superintendent's report.
Yeah, just a few things. Um, Monday of this week, we were able to welcome back staff. Uh, we welcomed certified staff on Monday to a, a whole group conversation, it was a really good time, uh, really kind of energetic, uplifting, uh, then they spent the day in a wellness training, uh, kind of to get some ideas of benefits, actually won and buy the staff, math for some reason is so bad, CPR, A D, uh, Dr. Mocker, they really put it all together and did an awesome job with the entire thing, um, to get that through there. And then on Tuesday, we brought classified staff in for the same kind of presentation, which is a little bit different as well, um, brought them in, gave them the, gave them kind of that theme for the year, which is what do you do with a chance? It's a storybook. Uh, Tuesday, Dr. Mocker read the book to classified staff, and I had to serve as her microphone stand, and she walks around a lot, so, um, that was, that was good, uh, for all of them, and they got to kind of read that book, but it really is about, you know, taking a chance, moving forward, uh, you know, going beyond, working outside your comfort zone. Uh, a lot of good feedback from that as well, as well as, uh, our classified staff were given a, uh, an in-service from our, uh, Mrs. Laney's department about dealing with different types of students and having success, uh, working with all of those students, um, that are there, and it was, it was a really great kind of the thing that I stepped into, really, really positively, really upbeat the whole day, uh, a lot of great feedback from those two days, and then on Wednesday, we were welcoming the class, I can't remember what his name is, twenty thirty-six, um, at all of our buildings for kindergarten orientation, uh, with the T-shirts, uh, got to get out to some of our buildings, and our buildings did a lot of neat, different things, uh, took a ride for ride on the bus, the kids loved the bus. Uh, Melridge did a signing day, similar to...
I know, that was really cool.
I thought that was awesome, it puts that picture of the students signing their really big pen, um, similar to what our high school students do, when they sign for, um, either, either their services, or for, you know, going to college, uh, to play sports, so Melridge did that as well, I thought that was a really great, you know, they, I felt that I...
I know, me too. What were they signing, what did it say?
I don't, I don't know, I just, I, I still have to...
I just have to plug into their names.
I'm hoping they're... So, uh, but getting in there today, and, uh, just, just to see the kids in, um, and the kids were actually doing this, uh, assessments today, but getting in there yesterday to see some of the kids, and our, our assigned students, or our high school leadership students, were helping them out, and they did a phenomenal job. Kindergarten, I mean, kindergarten is scary, and those, they, they just come from everywhere. Uh, but they did, our, our, our seniors, or our students who are in that program, did an amazing job, they're working with those kids, taking them on the bus, uh, to one point where they even said, okay, big kids off the bus, and our larger kinder, our taller kinder, just kind of, no, 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 that's high school kids, that's cute, um, so it's a great day, and that is, oh, last one tomorrow night is the tailgate part, um, so from forty-seven, uh, hopefully this rain will kind of go away, and, and we'll be back there, um, as well, kind of right before the home kickoff against the world, so, that is all I have that's happened this week.
Just isn't the big cross-country meet this weekend also?
Cross-country meet is Saturday, yeah, and they're, they're out there right now looking at the course.
Are they?
Yeah, it's, there's some spots where I think they're, I think they're actually starting to...
Yeah, they're rounding it a little bit. Down some reroutings.
Uh, because of, of the rain that we took out, it's really unique to have a course, um, but then, they're making some adjustments to try to make sure that we can still go off without an...
And I've heard really great things about that, I've not been, but...
Yeah, it's, it's, it's huge, and running at night, cross-country is usually something to do at four o'clock, you don't do it at night, um, under the lights, in fact, they bring light towers and all that, it's a really cool thing, and...
And they string the path with Christmas lights, so...
Yeah, Mrs. Rivers, I heard a lot of...
How many, how many, so the, the course is what, three point one miles, is it, it's a...
I think it's three, I think it's a five K.
Five, it's a five K, so when I was here, it was only two and a half, but next year they went to three point one.
Lucky you.
Yes, exactly, it saved me probably added years to my life.
Exactly.
But, Mr. Olesik, so, so how, so just tell us, how in the world do you spend, do you stroll out three point one miles of Christmas tree lights?
Well, that's Jeff Weber's problem.
It is, it is something that the cross-country team actually does, I mean, it's part of their, it's a fundraiser as well for them, because of the, and they bring out middle school, so it's also, there's also a two-mile course?
Yeah.
Because the middle school runs two miles, and then they have all different, um, all different divisions to run, I think they're racing from seven to, like, uh, the last race is ten thirty.
Yeah.
Um, and if the course stays the same, it might be a tough muder this year, not necessarily, um, but we're hoping that we can get, re, get at least routeage through some drier areas, so it'll go off without an itch, and it'll...
Cross-country folks, they can handle it.
They, they...
If they can handle the mud, if they've done that, I survived.
We were, we were thinking about...
Next generation.
Driving them home.
Yeah. So, that's it.
All right, thank you. All right, that brings us to the treasurer's report.
Okay, um, Willard today, uh, myself, and Dr. Retino, and Mr. Slick, and Mr. Olesik had a meeting with, uh, Lincoln Management Systems about the vestal project, um, they've secured their subcontractors, and we had some discussion with them and their leasing contractor, um, what kind of work we can complete during the school year, uh, you know, instead of doing the entire project next summer, obviously, here at the campus, we're constructing out, vestal will be next summer, and that's not, you know, not an option to do during the school year, but at Buckeye and Melridge in LaMooth, can they work long weekends, and to do some parts or pieces of it, just to get some of the work completed before next summer, when they try to complete the entire project, but I think August eighth is when this thing substantially completed, they did that week. So, we're looking at that, uh, we're looking at possibly doing something like the November sixth and seventh, that weekend before it's election day, we're off Monday, Tuesday, repeat days of six and seven, so, but it's, is, if the materials are in time, so it's, it's getting close to that time. If not, Thanksgiving weekend, winter break, Martin Luther King weekend, President's Day weekend, those couple random weekends, we have a spring break, what can we get done throughout the school year? Um, so we're gonna be, the, one subcontractor to put a schedule, the other one to give us the dates that we are closed for all weekends, and we can work something with the schedule that way. Uh, and then since we didn't have a finance meeting, uh, before this weekend, like, two weeks ago, there's a couple items on the agenda, I just wanted to bring to the board attention, so the contract for the graduation ceremonies on there, it's about a three thousand dollar increase from last year, last year was about nineteen thousand, and now it's at twenty-two thousand, uh, just want to, we used to have a twenty-five percent discount on it, and they've dropped it to a ten percent discount, so most of the change in price is about three thousand dollar increase. Uh, I've been talking to Jamie, and it's like, it's tricky to, they do such a good job with the ceremony, it's like, we'll figure we recommend the contract for one more year, and then decide from there if we want to continue in the future for that. Uh, the next item on the agenda is the preschool lease that Hill Road, that's just the same cost as, as the prior years, and then the third item on the agenda is a little unique thing, it's called a Dragonfly account, uh, Dragonfly replaced harbor, harbor was the system that we use to pay athletic officials, it's what the O H S A A side used for assigning officials, and you would pay through that system, uh, I think they got a little agreement with their, agreement with their pricing, and they were terminated by O H S A A, and then they, under contract, have the Dragonfly, so it's basically approving it with a new vendor, uh, basically send, we send ten thousand dollars to, to the system, and then that paying the, you know, officials throughout the seasons.
Where do they get their dirty change from, pause, or that?
They get it to ninety-nine through...
Okay, and then, through, through who?
Through Dragonfly, so it used to be harbor, so that, the whole point of doing it is so the district's not cutting all these checks, and all these ten ninety-nines, and then there's billated checks and all that stuff, take a lot of process and have a treasury office and athletic office, and it's a dotted line, the, there's an assignment that assigns officials of the game, and then our athletic department, this confirms, yes, they were there, and they can release payment, and they can pay quickly where, you know, in our office, it takes time to do a check run, be like, you check runs off, and so through Dragonfly, formerly Harbor, they get paid within a couple days of the campaign. And then their, their, the information's already there, so they work for multiple districts, it's not, you know, it's going to pay for the, and city, and here and there, it's all one system. And then lastly, on the buildings and grounds, uh, agenda tonight, there's only one item, and that's the formerly main, the main entry waves of the campus, and J K Way, so I asked Dr. Mocker to bring the sign in, uh, you want to, to Dr. Retino, I'm not sure how that...
So usually, actually, yes, because Dr. Retino was the one that coined this phrase, so years and years and years ago.
So the entrance up here of, was a real project, Dr. K, we get a second entrance cut into it, and coming from LaMooth, as I did, I, I had a, a history of sometimes not being on time for meetings, give me a hard time, in fact, where it's, I don't know if I even watch, things like that, there was one meeting, when they finally opened up the new driveway, you couldn't come in this entrance, because the bus gate was closed, um, I was driving in, and I was a little bit late, he said, you're late again, I go, I would have been on time for, I used, a good choice for J K Way there, and it just stuck.
Yes, and so we also, twenty years from now, want people to remember who J K is, so we also are gonna put this up, um, in his honor. I just said today, it's a good thing he retired before I realized the pond that we had out there, because I would have made that J K pond, and we would have put a birdhouse right in the middle, like in the marsh and those kinds of things, but he got a driveway, because it was definitely his top project, so, so these will go up now officially.
And, and he is aware, he's at his house, because I did call him, I had my little friend to listen, King Rachel.
Right. That was the easiest approval of the buildings and grounds.
It was, it was absolutely...
It was, it was a why have, has it been done yet? I think was actually the question that came up, and we mentioned it.
I think Melissa threatened us.
There may have been some threatening, he also said, he didn't want them up, and I said, you're leaving, we're going to do whatever we want. It was a really weird way things played out, but he has seen them, because we gave them to him, what, at his retirement, I think, in June.
We're gonna put them on both sides of the sign.
Yes, we're gonna do both sides of the big sign, so we can see both sides.
When we tell people to pull into, they're pulling to J K Way.
Super awesome.
Please fire it forward.
Thank you. Um, that brings us to public participation. Anyone wishing to address the Board of Education will be recognized by the Board President. Speakers are requested to identify themselves and their topic. Comments are limited to three minutes. Hannah?
All right. Denise Bruster, Concord resident, um, just a couple of things to clarify, the rest of the reports, like Buckeye and Melridge and all the others, when, what was the timeline when they're gonna be completed?
Right, September thirtieth is the target, September thirtieth, next month.
Next month, okay, so, um, you know, uh, Boonda made mention of, um, you know, the low hanging fruit, things that might be accomplished by our own, um, you know, um, personnel or hiring on a smaller level if it has a high need, I just wondered about, you know, are there things out there that need to be done sooner than later, and I'm gonna give one example, um, you know, speaking of Buckeye, there is a first grade that has a much smaller room, the students in one window, it's really not sufficient ventilation, and if the trailer's not coming till November, I just would like someone to take a look at that, um, it may need an airbrush, because it was pretty bad on drop-off, and I just wanted to alert you to that. Okay, and then, um, the other thing I wanted to ask about, um, you mentioned strategic plan quite a bit, um, is that online, or is that something to request?
It's online.
It's online, okay, so I'll look more.
All right, thank you. Great, any other public participation? Yes?
Uh, down in music, please, we'll count you up, I'm gonna address the board and ask a question, also, I was reading, and I called the State Board of Education, but you know how that is, they're gonna call me back, and hopefully, and anyhow, Ohio's third grade reading guarantee, and Ohio's one of seventeen or eighteen states that uses this, I would just like to have one of these meetings to update where we stand on, there's some, uh, schools here in Lake County that are not doing too well, you know, they have a mark of six hundred and ninety, they call it a scale, blah, 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 not a proficiency rating, they call it differently, and I was figured out, I've got calls in, and I've talked to a couple of State Board members, I know a lot of people down there on education, I call it a lot of times, and the Attorney General's Office, I call them, or I've even gone down to his office in Columbus, uh, the Rhodes Building, eleventh floor, if you wanna go, they won't give any legal advice, but they will explain some things for you. But I just wanted to say where Riverside School District stands on this Ohio's third grade reading, bottom line, if you don't read a certain number, one of the readings, I saw six ninety, but, but I'm trying to find out how, how they figured this out, and so forth and so forth, you know, how many students do we have involved in that, you know, basically, as, this is third grade, if you don't, you know, the parents can say, okay, keep them in third, or let them, promote them to fourth, and so forth, and as we all know, reading's the basis of any type of learning, and if our students can't read well, we're in trouble, so, that's all I ask, I'm gonna call the State Board again, and we'll talk about it, and I'm gonna talk to a couple, uh, State Board members, and talk to them about, and the more words you get, different opinions you get, I have found over all these years, so, and State Board of Education is the boss, so, all right, that's it, I just wanted to ask and see, talk about that, and see where that stands, and, uh, we'll go from there, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public participation?
That'll be sure, Concord, um, you know, now that Johnny brought up that, uh, reading, which we have talked about, we had meetings before, I just want to reiterate the fact that if a child cannot read by the time they get through the third grade, there's a higher chance that they probably will not graduate from high school, and some studies have even said that it's four times more likely they won't graduate, so, again, I, as a citizen too, and a tact bear, I want to be able to find out also, where are we with, uh, the third grade reading guarantee, and if there needs to be more progress with it, has the board, and has Melissa, and will the superintendent also get together, make sure that these kids get a chance, and that they don't get pushed ahead without having that critical ability to read before they get to the fourth grade?
Thank you. Any other public participation? Yes?
Hi, I'm Chris Weiss from Leroy, first of all, I wanted to thank Mr. Olesik and his crew, um, looking around the buildings and grounds, they look gorgeous, and Mr. Olesik, you delivered once again on an enormous task, and I want to thank you for the effort of you and your staff, and your temporary people that worked this summer. I also want to bring to the attention of, uh, the district, uh, the efforts of a couple students in the Riverside District, one of them is Jake Catlett, Jake is gonna be a senior this fall, right now Jake is in Army Basic Training, he enlisted into the Ohio National Guard, and went to basic training this summer, a lot of kids are on their iPhones most of the summer, he was in Army Basic Training, uh, he's gonna be a military police officer in the Ohio National Guard, and when he returns, he actually will also be back on the football team as a senior, so I wanted to give a shout out to the Catlett family for, uh, their support, and I'd like to ask the entire district to support Jake, uh, would be kind of nice if when they announce players, or make announcements at the football game, something could be said about this young man, who's, uh, in my opinion, pretty exceptional. And, uh, the last thing I wanted to talk about, and I wanted to thank, um, Dr. Retino, uh, for, he, uh, decided to go forward and, uh, accept, uh, my son Eric's Eagle Scout project, my son Eric is a seventh grader at LaMooth, and he intends to build a playset for, uh, the field to be placed back behind the football stadium, uh, he's fundraising twenty thousand dollars, he has a GoFundMe site, if you look up Eric Weiss's Eagle Scout project, and wish to donate, you can learn more about the project there and find the link for a donation, um, and I ask that you help support his effort too, as a, yet another scout, trying to reach the rank of Eagle Scout, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public participation? All right, that brings us to our consent agenda, so the first one's finance and audit.
Sure, we have a motion to approve the items listed on the finance and audit consent agenda, as recommended by the Treasurer, it's eight to five.
Second.
Is there any discussion? I'll read the donations, we are accepting a hundred and seventy-five coupons for three six-inch subs from Subway located at ninety-eight fifty-three Johnny Kink Bridge Road, uh, which the Smotys are the owners of that, so thank you to them, they were always, always supportive of the district, so. always supportive of the district, so. There's no other discussion, can we call the roll?
Scott Fishel?
Aye.
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Lori Krasny?
Aye.
Olivia Gracie?
Aye.
Motion carried. That brings us to personnel. Sure, we have a motion to approve the items listed on the personnel consent agenda as recommended by the superintendent and its A through E, including our additions that we added at the beginning.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on those items? All right, well then, can we call the roll, please?
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Lori Krasny?
Aye.
Olivia Gracie?
Aye.
Scott Fishel?
Aye.
Motion carried. That brings us to a consent agenda item for curriculum and programming.
Make a motion to approve the items listed on the curriculum and programming consent agenda as recommended by the superintendent, item A and B. Can I get a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry, we were looking at the wrong thing, sorry. No discussion.
Okay.
Laura Krasny?
Aye.
Laura Gracie?
Aye.
Scott Fishel?
Aye.
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Motion carried. Next is a consent agenda for buildings and grounds and operations.
Motion to approve the items listed on the buildings and grounds consent agenda. Item A is recommended by the superintendent. May I have a second?
I'll second. Can we read that?
Sure. All right, this is as was said and stated earlier, the, about JK Way. Be resolved effective immediately. The Riverside Local School District Board of Education hereby directs the superintendent to take such actions as are necessary to move the main entrance driveway to the Riverside Campus as JK Way in honor of Dr. James Kales, who faithfully served Riverside Local School District as superintendent from August 1st, 2007 until July 31st, 2023. Well earned. Any discussion? Can you call the roll, please? Olivia Gracie?
Aye.
Scott Fishel?
Aye.
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Lori Krasny?
Aye.
Motion carried. That brings us to the board of education update.
Um, I've got one, two things. So just to respond just briefly about our reading scores, I would like to make note that we are, the state is moving forward with adding curriculum for the science of reading, if I'm not mistaken, and we are fully prepared and already starting to implement that thanks to Dr. Mlocke's initiatives over the summer. And that I think it's a really exciting time for this district because Dr. Retino has his, some really great visions of what rigor should look like in the classroom, I just remember that word from DLT, it would come up all the time, and he would talk about rigor and rigor and rigor, and his ideas about accountability and his, his exceptional knowledge of data will, will serve us well going forward, especially with this kind of initiative for reading, so that's exciting.
And are you done? I'd just like to say, I did make my way to Lamuft this morning for the start of classes, and the very first moments of Dr. Basich's tenure as principal, all went swimmingly, it was terrific. The, the students arrived with, for the most part, happy, happy faces, though some were lamenting the end of summer, but, you know, that's, that's life. But I did, I was very excited to be there.
I'm sorry, some staff as well.
But it was, it was very nice to be there and see the, you know, the students. We don't often, as, as board members, we don't always get a chance to see, you know, the things, see those who our decisions directly impact, right? We just, you know, we're not in the buildings on a regular basis, at least on mine. So, so anyway, but that was, that was a great place to be, and welcome all students, and looking forward to a good year.
And I was able to attend Monday and Tuesday for the staff and concert, I was like, oh, they were really, done really well, and kudos to everybody, because I think there was a lot of excitement. I had a whole people stop me outside or afterwards to kind of say how they really enjoyed it, so it was good to see that, and a lot of clapping, and, you know, for everybody that put a lot of work in during the summer to get ready for the school year too, so.
And it was also fun to be part of the kindergarten orientation. They're, they're just so awesome, just going and giving out those T-shirts and whatever, and it's such a chaotic day. I mean, it's...
Do you, you weren't fearful?
I was not fearful. There were a lot of adults present, so it was also a lineup, you know, and I think I was saying that every year I go, I think, gosh, the parents look so much younger, and they get, they seem to get younger and younger, but it's probably just me getting older and older, so.
I remember, I remember one of the teachers said, please slow down, and the kids like went into super slow motion.
I was going to laugh.
I was like, okay, so, they're so cute.
Anything else? All right. I'm going to make the motion to move to executive session, so be it resolved that the Riverside Local School District Board of Education hereby adjourns to executive session at...
River Fly.
Oh, and it's on time.
Take a bow, Rich.
So 7:55 PM to discuss personnel matter relating to the employment of a public official and compensation, and the Riverside Local School District Board of Education hereby designates all matters discussed in this executive session as strictly confidential and finds that this designation is warranted because of the status of this matter and the need to preserve confidentiality to properly conduct the business of this board of education. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you.
I just know before we vote that the board, whether we turn back to public session afterwards, may I or may not take action on a personal item, personal items? Do you want to read the, the upcoming meetings, is that part of...
Oh, just in case.
Just in case, so that people...
Yeah, I can read that one. Finish this first, and I'll say real quick.
Well then, are we in... I don't, well, this...
Oh, because once we go, we're in executive session.
When they were actually in executive session, so I...
So we'll back this up to the board of education update, just in case. There's a Buildings and Grounds and Operations Committee meeting September 11th, 2023 at 7:30 AM. Finance and Audit and Personnel Committee meeting September 21st, 2023 at 8:15 AM, 15, 8:15 AM, sorry.